We're going to call this meeting to order. Will you first join us in a salute to our nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Carolittis' records show that Supervisors Cassiola, Agizio, Fisher, Barney, and Shifani are in attendance. In addition, our Township Manager, Don Genuzzo, our Assistant Township Manager, Jack King, our Chief of Police, Sean Bukowinski, our Township Engineer, Dan Dazeroth, and Joe Seitz, our Solicitor, Gretchen Moore, our Fire Chief, Ted Wolford, and our Director of Southbridge EMS, Dan Miller. At this time, we will take comments from the residents on something you see on the agenda. If you have a question or comment on an agenda item, please feel free to just come up to the microphone so people can hear you. Anybody have anything?
Yes, Kevin Camerson, 15 Swahart Road, got a question about Resolution 115-2025, about the change order for Contract B. Like, what was the scope of work? Like, that wasn't known during the walk down at the bidding stages?
No, this is in a... This... The final decisions were made on North DePauli Road to put in a curb to improve the site distance there. So, we seek... We sought quotes from our two low bidders that we already had in the paving program to do this additional work.
Oh, so that's prior to award?
Yeah, it was scoped after the project was awarded. And so, we got two prices, and Morgan is the low price to do it.
So, was that part of the budget that we... That is approved? Like, is that still under the total, what you had?
Well, it's definitely under, yes.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else have any comments on the agenda items? Our announcements... I didn't announce this last month. Prior to our May 5 monthly meeting, the Board of Supervisors did have an executive session with our Solicitor regarding litigation matters. I should have announced it at that meeting, and I forgot. The Board of Supervisors will have an executive session regarding an employment issue tonight, immediately following this meeting. Oh, yeah, so we just had an executive session around 6:30 on another police contract matter. The Cecil Township Parks and Recreation Board is sponsoring a Touch a Truck event on Saturday, June 7. It really is a good event. I mean, really, kids really do turn out for that. Also, our Cecil Township Historic Society is... On Wednesday, June 8, will be meeting here in the Township Building. The guest speaker will be Kathy Pickford, who will discuss the history of bank robberies in Cecil Township. On Saturday, June 21, the movie in the park will be Mona 2... Moana... See, I'm not up on it. Mona 2 at 8:30 rated desk.
You have a granddaughter.
Prior to the start of the movie, there will be a Mona scavenger hunt, and Mona will be here to meet and greet everyone. I'll get to meet her now. And this is sponsored by our Parks and Recreation Board. Municipal offices will be closed on Friday, July 4, in observance of the Independence Day, and will resume at 8:00 a.m. on Monday, July 7. Also, the community fireworks and Amuse Ball Field will take place either Friday, July 4 at dusk, or the rain date will be Saturday, July 5. And that's just a super turnout to me. I think one of the biggest events we're having anymore. Our staff reports. Manager, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Board is aware, we have... We're currently soliciting bids for the destruction or the demolition of the old municipal building or the old Public Works Building. It was commonly held that the Township was required to keep professional building documents for perpetuity. I was able to find out that if we get those digitally reduced to what they call PDFA format, which is an archival format, that we no longer need to keep those paper copies. So, that could be part of a solution for us as we move forward with all the extra stuff that is in that building that's remaining there. So, as we go through the demolition process and the disposition of items in that building, that's one solution we can look at. Also, I'll be providing the Board with a destruction record for those items that are of nonessential use. Most of them are tax records, well beyond the seven-year retainment period that's required by the Municipal Records Act. So, hopefully, I can get that list to the Board for their action at the next meeting, and we'll have a professional shredding company come in and dispose of those records. That's all I have.
Thank you, Don. Sean, I think you said you didn't have any reports you told me. Jack, anything on building or Parks and Record? Dan, Engineers Report?
I have a few things to report on. Number one, the Lawrence Park drainage that the Board authorized to do over there related to improvement of the fields. That works complete, and the sod is in place. We have had a lot of rain, so we're in good shape for now, but that'll have to be paid attention to in terms of working with Public Works to make sure that keeps water and that gets done. Second thing related, there's a big estimate for payment on the road project tonight. Just to give a Board a quick recap, Morgan's been making good progress on Contract B. They've done Laurel Hill from... From 36 Laurel Hill to 36 Laurel Hill Road. They've done storm sewer, milled the pavement, and they'll be paving that project by the end of the week. Mulberry Way from the top of the hill, from Beet Street to the top of the hill. From Beet Street, paving completed Friday. Working on stone driveway restoration today and finished tomorrow. Topsoil and seating restoration tomorrow. The short alley from Mulberry Way to Beet Street, the paving was completed on Friday. Topsoil and seating restoration tomorrow. Birch Way from Beet Street to Beet Street. Scratch has been installed on the roadway. The paving to be completed by the end of the week. Cherry Way from School Street to Locust Street, the paving is completed. Restoration needs to be completed. And the alley between Redwood Drive and Wildwood Drive from Cowden to Wildwood Road... Wildwood Drive, the excavation is complete. The milling base is installed and paving to be completed before the end of the week. So, that's the update on the work that Morgan's completed. They'll also be doing the work on the curb on the Pauli Road next week. And Joe just got notice that... That Mele and Mele will be in to do the paving on July... In July for South Point Boulevard. So, July 6 to let them know that. So, that's the update on the paving.
Can I ask a question, Dan? Just so we can clarify it for the record? Sorry, I am... Sorry. We've gotten some complaints about some of the curbs and stuff over on the alleys in Amuse. Morgan is working to fix those issues, correct? Just so that... Or Joe... Yes, that's what I thought. So, if you've reached out, we are aware of the issues over there, and we are working with Morgan. Joe Seitz is, as well as our Director of Public Works, Joe Hurson, to correct the issues. Just give us a little bit of time to get them fixed.
And then, just to clarify to the Board, we are out to bid, as Don said, on the demo of the Public Works Building. We're going to take two bid... Base bids on that. One for the partial demolition to leave part of the area for storage, and the second bid will be to completely take the building down so the Board can make a decision on that. We'll have those bids in by your next meeting. And I believe that's it. That's all I want to mention.
Thank you, Dan.
Don, real quick, is there anything that we have that we cannot digitize in that building?
No, all records that we have could be digitized. Yeah, there's nothing that's an exception to that.
Thank you, Dan. Gretchen, our Solicitor's report?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all have my Solicitor's report for the month. In terms of updates on the litigation front, there will be an oral argument here before the zoning hearing Board on June 12. That's related to the Range Resources substantive validity challenge to the Board's zoning ordinance amendments. Also, there was an additional appeal to the Office of Open Records by Range from their... The third request that they filed. So, we're currently litigating that matter. And we filed an appeal to the Court of Common Pleas related to their first and second requests. That was filed two weeks ago. Everything else is in the report. Thanks.
Thank you, Gretchen. Ted Wolford, Fire Chief?
No report.
Okay, and Dan?
Nothing.
There's nothing? Thank you, guys. For our Resolutions, number 111-2025, it's to consider the application for the intermunicipal transfer of the Pennsylvania Liquor License R-8922 from Bentley's Main Street Corporation to... I wrote it down. Forgot it.
Bar, South Point.
Bar, I... On Corporate Drive in South Point. Is there a motion to approve that application?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, the motion carries. Number 112-20... Oh, I think we're not going to... We're not even going to consider 112-2025 till we further review that ordinance. For our item number 113-2025, to consider the 10th partial release of the financial security posted for the public and private improvements for Traditions of America Phase 1 from $369,704.23 to $150,739.16. It's a total reduction of $218,965.07.
They continue to do work to address the punch list over there and request reductions. We've not taken over any roads in this development yet, but they are due this partial release.
How soon are they to being able to turn over roads to our specs?
Until we're satisfied that they have the final punch list addressed, we're still on hold.
Okay.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For number 114-2025, it's to consider approval of application for payment number two, and it's the final for the retainage being held for the 22 Moini Road demolition and cleanup project in amount of $2,170 to strenuous excavation.
Yeah, we received all of our final paperwork we needed, and we're recommending this final payment.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For number... Item number 115-2025, it's to consider change order number one to Contract B of the 2025 Road Resurfacing Program to Morgan Escavating LP in the amount of $21,000 for the curb work on North DePauli Road that Dan just described. I just want to further describe that. We... As you saw, we're able to move it more than 12 feet away from where it used to sit right against the old Thai restaurant. So, I mean, the site distance, it'll be better. Every foot we moved it over makes it a little bit better. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved?
I'll second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item number 116-2025, it's to consider the approval of application for payment number one for Contract B of the 2025 Road Resurfacing Program in the amount of $306,212.29 to Morgan Escavating.
So moved.
Second.
Dan, was there any issue on that one?
No, that's the one I just described, all the work that I described in the... On my Engineers Report. That's why. Want to give you an update. That's a big chunk of money.
Thank you.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item number 117-2025, it's to consider application number 2025-0006 for the Lukinske Plan Number 2 subdivision plan, contingent upon approval from our Township Municipal Authority. The applicants are Daniel and Roberta Lukinske, and that's on 23 Sylvan Drive, which is off Wilson Avenue in R2 Medium Density Residential District.
So, this is the property, like we said, along Sylvan Drive. This is the lot that was subdivided... Not really subdivided, but this is a lot that was developed into a home site. They're now subdividing it further to create Lot Number 2. They're planning to create a private access to this particular lot. They're also, at the same time, taking interest in what was the paper street here on this edge of the property. We've reviewed the plan, and we're satisfied that the plan is technically complete and meets the requirements of the ordinance other than of only Municipal Authority approval.
Is there a motion to approve the subdivision?
So moved.
It's been moved. And I'll second that. Those in motion or in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For number 118-2025, it's to consider application number 2025-0007 for the Steel Town Plan Residential Development Phase 1 subdivision plan. The applicant is Keystone 76 Development along 5 Coomer Road in the R2 Medium Density District.
Bob is here from PVE Scheffler, just to give the Board an update on this plan. If you'd like to see the plan again.
Hello again, my name's... Robert Bynne with Scheffler and Company here on behalf of Keystone 76 Development to present the Steel Town PRD for final PRD approval and preliminary overall land development and final Phase 1 land development. I think you've all seen this plan several times. It's essence... In essence, nothing has changed. The layout is the same as the last time you saw the plan. Same number of units. Nothing has really changed. Zoned R2, it's a 63.82 acre parcel. We're proposing 127 units, of which 85 are single families and 42 are townhomes. We are breaking this into two phases, although all the grading will be completed at the same time. Phase 1 will be all the 42 townhomes, and it will be 40 single units, which are on the left of... Or the west of the plan. Of the 63.82 acres, 30.46 acres will remain open space, which is 48%. That, almost 19 acres, will remain undisturbed. Density is 1.99 units per acre. Minimum lot size are 62 feet. Setbacks are 25 front, 10 side, 25 rear. We are proposing 4,440 feet of new roadway designed to the Township standards. Four-foot sidewalks on either side of the streets, a mailbox cluster on Cowden Road, and also overflow parking in the townhome areas. And stormwater. Stormwater will be controlled by the four stormwater basins. Gateway is thoroughly reviewed, our stormwater plan. I can safely say that we meet all the requirements, and any concerns about water leaving the site, perhaps down to the Montour Trail or the park, that's all been covered and vetted out. We're good there. Finally, it's going to be served by Public Utilities, Water, and Sanitary.
How committed are you to the road names?
Pardon me?
How committed are you to the road names? Blast, Furnace, Drive?
The road names, they came from my client.
It's not my favorite. Blast, Furnace, Drive. Could we reconsider that?
It's a little bit of reference to Steve, that's Blast.
I got it. I understand where it came from. I'm just a little concerned that that's a lot to write, and are we committed to that?
No, we have the right to approve the road names, so...
I mean, am I crazy? Am I the only one on the Board that doesn't love that?
We'll talk to Dan about that, too.
Huh?
We'll talk to Dan about that also.
Otherwise, the plan looks great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, we've reviewed the plan. We've provided a letter dated today, just because we wanted to make sure all the revisions were as far along as they could. This is a large plan. We've given the Board a letter dated today, and basically, it's all some minor changes. They're still required to the recorded plan to meet the county requirements and really just the typical third-party reviews. Municipal Authority, MPDS permit, signing operation and maintenance agreements for the stormwater. So, I would just recommend to the Board that there be a slight modification to the approval of the agenda tonight, because it is actually final PRD approval and approval of Phase 1. And I would just recommend that that be contingent upon our letter dated today, which is June 2, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve pending Dan's request for the change of the letter date.
Date is June 2, 2025. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? The motion carries. Carol, 4 to 0 to 1 abstention. For item number 119-2025, it's to consider the application of 2025-0009 for the Universal Electric Phase 2 Parking Lot Extension... Expansion. It's their site plan for Mascaro Construction Company on 168 Georgetown Road. It's a light industrial zone. Dan, are you bringing that up?
Yeah, I'm trying to here. Got the wrong last track. Hey, this is Universal Electric. This project has actually been contemplated for several years. What they're doing is they're adding additional parking, trying to get the best plan here. So, they're actually completing the last piece of the parking lot here. This was an auxiliary parking lot that was constructed or planned for. They're actually going to build this piece here now. They've accounted for the stormwater in their Phase 1 parking, which was right down in this area here. The stormwater is actually located over in this corner. So, it's really just additional parking to address the needs of the growing facility. And there's really no issues. They've addressed all our comments. They have... Obviously, have adequate parking now. So, I would recommend that the Board consider this tonight.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item number 120-2025, it's to consider setting Monday, July 7 at 6:30 p.m. as the date and time for a public hearing regarding rezoning application number 2025-0012. The applicant is Robert and Kathy McColsky, located on 27 Glass Hill Road. It's a Low 1 Density Residential District. The request is to change it to the... Butts the existing MUC that Steel Town Development is... Has just had changed. I'm in R2. I'm sorry, R2. The Planning Commission did review the request, and they do... I don't know what... Would they recommend approval?
So, what do you want? R... MUR or R2? You want R2, though?
So, we're not like spot zoned right here. Everything or not, this is all R2 now.
That's fine. He just said MUR and R2. I just wanted to make sure that what we were doing was what you wanted. So, you want to... You're requesting a rezoning to R2?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, makes sense.
We got it.
Okay.
For the date, those in favor, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just so you know, you won't be able to vote that night. If this is going to be an actual reason, you get it 25 days out.
So, we can hold that and then vote in August?
You can have the hearing if you want.
Yeah, and then vote in August. Okay.
I had a motion and seconded. Those in favors?
It has to be... She said it has to be 45 days. So, we'll hold the hearing on July 7, but we won't be able to vote that night. We'll just have to hold the actual vote at our August meeting. Makes sense? Okay.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For item number 121-2025, it's to consider hiring of Troy Musser as a mechanic with the Department of Public Works, subject to the terms and conditions of our union contract. Effective start date will be June 3, 2025. We are filling this position because our current mechanic was promoted to Assistant Public Works Director.
Deputy Director. So moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 122-2025, consider hiring of Alexander Kuntz for the position of part-time firefighter at the rate of $21 per hour.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For item number 123-2025, it's to consider hiring of Richard Berry for the position of part-time firefighter at the rate of $21 per hour.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item 124-2025, it's to consider hiring of John Hackison for the position of part-time firefighter at a rate of $21 per hour.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Tom, can I have a question?
Yes.
Okay, these three paid farmhands, are they brand new? Does that make... How many now paid farmhands do we have in Cecil?
Ted, you can tell her about the part-timers.
We had two part-timers leave us, so we are replacing two of them, and we're adding an additional part-timer to fill the shifts that we have.
Wait a minute.
They're experienced firefighters.
Okay, we got two part-timers, paid part-timers. We don't have no full-time?
We have two full-time firefighters.
Okay, we have two full-time.
He's asking for totals in the department now.
But not all of them work all at once.
Right.
The reason I'm asking is, the question was asked of me. We have how many part-timers?
After tonight, we will have seven.
Seven part-timers. And how many full-time?
Two.
Plus the chief, he's the third one.
Wow, okay. Okay, so there are seven part-timers.
And they're scheduled according to Ted's workload.
And two full-timers?
Yes.
Plus you?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I thought we did that one.
Oh, yeah, that?
Yeah, we have to... You're on 125.
Okay. Okay, for 125-2025, it's to consider the purchase or bid of 22 Moini Road at a private sale or judicial sale in amount not to exceed $6,000. This motion authorizes the Township to obtain an appraisal of the property, and the Township will not exceed the appraised value in the purchase or bid. Gretchen, will you tell them why we're doing this, please?
Sure, so this is 22 Moini Road, which was taken down several years ago by the Township in an emergency situation. The Township then leaned the property. And at this point, it has gone to a judicial sale. A judicial sale comes after an upset sale, and the sale process through a judicial sale basically gets rid of any liens on the property. So, the Township's lien would be extinguished through a judicial sale. When we get to this point, because we are a municipality, we have the option to try to purchase it at a private sale in advance of the bid process. So, the Township has two options, both of which they will attempt to effectuate. The first is a private sale in advance of the judicial sale. If we can't do it in a private sale, the Township, if they pass this motion, would they have the ability to purchase it at the bid process, obviously with these parameters, an amount not to exceed $6,000? And then, they would be the owner and could do with it what they wish.
Keep in mind, this is a property that we worked to get a grant to clean up. So, now the Old French Club is gone, and it's now a piece of usable property. So, after all the work to get the grant to get it cleaned up, it seems silly to let it go without at least getting some of our leaned money back.
We have a motion to approve this motion, this purchase bid?
So moved.
Been moved. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For 126-2025, it's to consider payment of $5,000 to Wordrite for Special Media Services.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For 127-2025, it's to consider ratification of our police contract for a five-year term. The year is 2026 through 2030. Aye. The motion carries. For one twenty-seven dash twenty twenty five, it's to consider ratification of our lease contract for a five-year term in the years two thousand twenty-six through two thousand thirty.
So moved.
It's been moved. Second. And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion, the motion carries. For item one twenty-eight dash twenty twenty five, it's to consider applying for Federal Emergency Management Agency Grant under the SAFER, the Safe Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant Program, to help fund additional full-time firefighters. This grant, if awarded, would cover seventy-five percent of each firefighter's salary that we hire and benefits for the first two years, then thirty-five percent in a third year. After the third year, the township will be responsible for one hundred percent of the firefighter's salary and benefits.
Ted, do you want to talk, you want me to talk about it? So Ted and I are going to work together on this grant. This is actually the second grant that we worked on together in the past month. The first one, I forgot to put on the agenda, but we'll add it for next month. We worked on a grant for ninety-eight thousand dollars for radios. That's separate from this. This one is a safer grant that allows us, as it says in the agenda, to cover a percentage of the cost of firefighters. As you probably know, we need to add some paid firemen, and this allows us to do it in a way that's a gradual cost to the township. Ted's been awesome to work with in providing information, and then I sit down and write it all into a grant form. So fingers crossed, we get this, and we can add three, at least three new firemen in the next year. So. This is the second grant. Like I said, we wrote a grant, which I forgot, my bad, to put on the agenda. I turned it in the nineteenth, the night before the election. For those of you that don't know, we, the county is upgrading their radio system and comes with a new radio system, requires the township to buy new radios, and the cost of those radios are a little over five thousand dollars per radio, and we need twelve. So we wrote a grant together, Ted and I worked together on this one, also to cover the full cost of the ninety-eight thousand dollars. So fingers and toes crossed, we get that one as well, but we're working as hard as we can to increase the fire service desperately needs in a way that is as little cost to you as the taxpayers as possible.
Is there a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For item number one twenty-nine dash twenty twenty five, it's to consider the board supervisors' meetings from Monday, May fifth, or regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Carol, again, thank you for twenty-five years of submitting motions that always get approved, or minutes that always get approved. For item number one thirty dash twenty twenty five, it's to consider the general fund invoices from May first through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Right now, we're open for, any of the residents have any comments, general comments, questions, complaints? Just, if you want to make a queue up here, if there's many of you, you can get in line. But please give us your name for the record, please.
Bonny Caden, Vinceny Road. I have a question concerning the dirt bike down on the old Moore Farm. Why did you put it in and expecting the noise up on Vinceny Road? If it keeps going, nobody on there will be able to sit on their porch. I had it even in my house last Saturday, like this past Saturday, last Saturday. I had it, so who approved that?
Bonny, we didn't put it in to begin with. The, the owner of the property just put it in on his own without any kind of permit or application. He was issued a cease and desist order by the zoning officer, and it goes in front of the magistrate. I don't know if there's a date set.
Either way, it's, it's taking, it's being taken care of.
Well, the cease and desist goes to the zoning board first?
You have to take the termination of the zoning board.
And I don't know if it's scheduled yet.
I mean, it's going, it's going to be in the future.
Yes, the township, yes, the township has told the property owner that.
None of us up there. Like, I went out on the back porch or the front porch, and hey, I sit on the front porch every evening in summertime. If it's going to keep noise, it can't.
The township was not aware that the motor cross track was being built.
I just wanted to know, I just wanted to, you answer my question. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Bonny. Anybody else have something?
Hi, Jay Barbarosa, Baker Road, resident, thirty, three years now. I'm here today as my annual comments and complaints about Baker Road. I know you guys get tired of hearing it, but first of all, it's good to see all the E-Board people here. Congratulations, Tom, back being chairperson. So every year I come here, and every year guys always show up, the township shows up, whether it's the road crew fixing the potholes, police enforcing the speed limit, do a great job. We got to do something more. And I'm not here to talk about the rezoning of the ordinance and stuff that you guys talked about earlier today. Since the roundabout's gone in, and anybody that has traveled our road knows it, the volume of vehicles has increased. My big complaints, the eighteen-wheelers, you guys put off signs, the police department actually there, just cited somebody a couple of weeks ago. Now, the good thing is, for me, I retired, so now I see it every day. So I'm here to complain, not just for me, but for everyone else. I can't get out of my driveway. There are times in the morning, there's twenty or thirty cars. It's when the light changes. Remember, Baker Road has now become the conduit for people going to Peters Township and Upper St. Clair. I think nobody travels Georgetown because it's so badly, you know, in disrepair and stuff, but I do hear there's some plans in the works about repaving it maybe next year. I mean, that's rumor I'm hearing and stuff.
It's being paved this year. It's being repaved this year.
But Jay, it is a shortcut. I mean, that's what people see from Peters and Upper St. Clair. It's a shortcut.
I, I know, and I, I can't stop that, but for the people that live there, it's just not a matter of like, if, it's when. One of us are going to get hit again, and you got, Don knows where I live. You guys came out and put a curb up there to try to keep the water runoff on my road last year, which, which really helped. It did. But when the police officer came, we had a medical condition in my house. He couldn't get out of the driveway last year. Sean's one of your officers, and I don't think people realize the volume of people that travel that road. And I think I asked you last year about putting rumble strips. I was just telling one of my neighbors here earlier, don't put the rumble strips in. The road has become so rough at the lower end, it's now, has its own rumble strips in there. But we got to do something with that road. I mean, it's, it's not built. If you remember, that road, for anybody that's been here, that was a red dog road. Then you paved it, you know, and improved it and stuff, which was really good for us that lived there, but the people that are coming through with the trucks and stuff, they destroyed the road. You guys are going to have to make some kind of investment. There's nothing left on their shoulders, you know that. And for the most part, there's not curbs and storm drains. So I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but somewhere, you guys got to make a decision, either we got to get all the trucks off, and I don't know what to do. I, I don't, I wish I had the resolution, but I do have the problem. And again, I'm speaking for like fourteen people, fourteen residents that live on that street and stuff. And, you know, the other thing that's really changed a little bit, too, now we have Amazon deliveries on our road. Our post office guy, I've talked to him, don't park on the side of the road because you're going to get killed, you know? We have a school bus that I've talked to them, they actually blocked the road, my timeline was up, I guess. They've actually like sort of blocked the road so the, the kids don't get hit and stuff. And when my kids were, were little, we had the same issue. So again, you guys have always addressed the issue, but we, we got to bite the bullet here and do something about our road.
We will take that under consideration. I think it was good the board heard it.
I know you was.
From residents there.
I just got to speak up and let you know, it's still, it's an ongoing thing and stuff.
Thank you, Jay.
And thank you for your efforts. Sean, thank you for the guys. I know I see them out there. I keep telling you, I think I invited you last year, come to my house, I will give you breakfast, okay? Let's put your car there like we do at the school, and we'll put a mummy or a skeleton in there. It'll get people to slow down, I guarantee it. Thank you.
Can I ask a question quickly before you? Is the issue speed or is it volume of cars? Or both? Okay. I just want to know, so we make sure we, okay.
You have signs on both sides. Like I said, the police are doing it, and I realize speeding is an issue everywhere, you know? It's not about people on their cell phones driving. They just drive exceptionally fast. Twenty-five is the limit, thirty is probably okay, but we're talking forty and fifty, you know? And like I said, I have to, I, I tell everybody comes to my, to my house, my, my next two neighbors on both sides, don't ever try to back out because you're going to get their back in your vehicle like taking off. Yeah, if you, for you that know where I live, I'm right there at the hump of the road, that's sort of a blind spot, so people can't see me when I come up the hill. They're, they have to accelerate. We get that. But they, when I pull out, like, you look, you look, you look, so.
Jay, believe it or not, through the years, people have come to us and asked us not to improve the road because they figure that's a solution for slowing down vehicles. So we will, we will take it under advisement, I promise you.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? Any board members have anything?
Just, we'll have to add that grant. I, that was my fault. I forgot to add that grant that we applied for.
We never argue about funding for grants.
I know, but I forgot to add it to the agenda.
There being no further business, this meeting is declared adjourned.